Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Norco City Council Regular Meeting on Wednesday, November 7th, here in with First Order Business Call to Order at 7:00 PM. Enroll call, please, for the City Clerk.
Councilmember Newton. Councilmember Hannah. Councilmember Bash. Mayor Protem Gronmire. Mayor Hoffman.
Yes.
All present.
And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Berwin Hannah.
(Inaudible) the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Renee Parish from the Beacon Hill Assembly of God Church.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you, Lord, and for the, God, the peace and the grace that you've given our nation, Lord, in terms of transitions and elections, God. And, Lord, as we look around the world, we don't take that for granted, but know that, Lord, that you have enabled us to establish this land, our forefathers, and, God, that you have enabled us, oh, Lord, to continue, Lord, to live and walk and live in freedom here. And so, Lord, we ask that you would bless, God, our council, Father, those, God, that have, Lord, that they've won reelection, that you continue to strengthen and give them wisdom, Lord, and guidance, Father, that you would bless, Father, our city, Lord, and renew the hope that is here, Father, for the community. And, Lord Jesus, that, God, as we look to you, God, Lord, your word says that you strengthen those who look to you and trust you. It says in Psalms 105. Father, that you would strengthen, Lord, our leaders, God, in their body, their mind, and their spirit, Father, Lord, to make not only right decisions, but, God, that they would be strengthened, Lord, in their character, Lord, in their physical health, Father, and, Lord, all those who assist them in our city government. And, Lord, we thank you. And, Lord, we especially want to remember our veterans tonight, Lord, as we look forward to Veterans Day, because they are the ones, over, God, the history of this nation, that has paid the ultimate price for this freedom and this opportunity to gather, Lord, to hear the grievances, to make decisions, Father. And, Lord, we want you to bless them, Father, God, Lord, that you would be with them, Lord Jesus, that they would sense, God, Lord, the honor and the respect that the nation has for them, Father. Lord, that you would bless them, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Renee. Now, before Scott's buzzer goes off.
It's turned off tonight?
It's turned off tonight? Okay. I'm going to ask the rest of my councilperson. Berwin, I'm going to make you get up again. Yeah, I know, it's terrible. Robin, Greg, Kevin, this is our fire department, so let's go down. Stop it, Scott.
(Inaudible)
We got to stand in front of this guy. Look at the bigger thing.
That's my security.
Thank you, security.
Honorable counsel, staff, public, it's our honor tonight to recognize the accomplishments of an employee over the last year that has gone above and beyond with his duties for the City of Norco and Cal Fire Riverside County Fire. As you recall, a couple weeks ago, we held the Third Annual First Responders Luncheon at Ellie Weaver Hall. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce. Our recipient wasn't able to attend during, doing, due to another assignment, so he is here tonight. We're going to talk about him a little bit, and he still, at this point, doesn't know he's getting this award. We brought him here under other pretenses. Captain Camp, would you join me up here, sir? But you're going to tell stories about his dad, too, from the Sheriff's Department, so we'll get him really red. So, Captain Camp worked at our Coridon Fire Station for the last three years. During that time, a little longer than three years, Captain Camp was tasked with recreating our Northwest Division Fire Explorer Program. The program at the time was suffering. Since then, he has devoted an enormous amount of time. One of these three years, Don was off on injury the entire year. And every Thursday night, he was here for explorer training while he was undergoing shoulder surgery. The emergency operations plan that's on the agenda tonight, while Don came back on light duty and only had one arm, he retyped the entire plan. And when you read it, it's a couple hundred pages. He was instrumental in that. Don has been instrumental in many school programs, community programs, teaching Stop the Bleed to our Norco Youth Advisory Council, doing numerous job fairs within the community, and just recently, a couple weeks ago, came back to do the very thing at the college. Don is an individual that always answers the phone. When we need him, he is there, as he is tonight. He thought he was coming to recognize the Explorer Program. In fact, we're here to recognize him. So I ask you all to give him a round of applause for his dedication and hard work.
(Inaudible)
Jamie, David, come on up. I got high back here.
(Laughter)
How to honor you. Thank you for your service.
I was talking with Chief Vike and Chief Lane before the meeting. I've got about 18 years with Cal Fire. The three years that I spent here in the City of Norco was without a doubt the highlight of my career. The bosses that I worked for, the crews that I worked with, the explorers that I coached, counseled, and mentors, you can't ask for anything better than that. It truly was an opportunity to come to work every day and just be glad that you were there. The community reminds me of a small town that I'm from in South New Jersey, and it really felt like home, so on behalf of everybody, thank you so very much.
The one thing he adds, especially of the City of Norco, is when we had our NART training, we do it over at Station 57, and he encouraged the explorers to come out and help us, too, so we have this young people to learn about ropes and tying and horses and animals. So, Don, thank you very much. And I won't tell any stories about your dad in the jail, but he is a good guy. All right. Thank you very much. Got pictures?
I forgot one major accomplishment. Don was the coach of our three-peat wagon race champions at the Day of the Cowboy for the Fire Explorers versus the Sheriff's Explorers. Huge accomplishment, I just want to bring that up again.
She's got to get ringers in there.
What? Three, right? Three?
Now we're going to post it.
While everybody's getting back, one good thing about Don, he's over at the Ben Clark Training Center where he's training young firemen to be filling the positions, so we appreciate everything he does for, not only for us over the past couple of years, but he's training new firemen, and hopefully they'll be on the line here soon to replace our guys that are moving up. So, congratulations, Don. All right, going now to City Council Business Item, item number one, City Council Communication Reports on Regional Boards and Commissions. Berwin, start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a little chart here on the upcoming closures for the 91 Freeway, but one of the guys from RCTC will be here in a little bit. I'll let him explain that one. RTA, on January 29th, they're going to launch a new bus route, go from Temecula to the City of Orange. They already have one that goes from Temecula to Corona, but they're going to put another route in there to go all the way to Orange. And it'll probably run about three times a day each, each direction to start out with. And with Vector, we've been very helpful about coming over every week or every two weeks and spraying mosquitoes on both sides of the river, here on our side and on the Eastvale side. And I think it's helping, because I haven't had any complaints the last couple of weeks. But Major Dillon, who's been the director out there, manager, for about 30-something years, he's retiring December 30th, be his last day, and we're going to really miss him. He's, goes to two or three World Health Conferences every year, and he is the only person in the Vector world that has received three lifetime achievement awards from all over the world. So, he's very, very smart on what he's, what he does, and he's a good guy. We're really going to miss him. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Berwin. Robin?
Nothing to report.
Kevin, down there?
I had my RCA meeting this week in WRCO. Our RCA has now protected 59,000 acres of a wildlife corridor. The way that works is that if you're building something in one area, you can purchase land in another area to mitigate, so you can continue doing construction. So that's pretty good. The other things were pretty mundane. And then, two very interesting things at WRCO. One, as you all know, we fought very hard against the cell towers, and then the FCC at a federal level decided that they would just let them do whatever they wanted to do. So the League of Cities, and maybe Andy and John know about this, the League of Cities is now banding together with other leagues of cities in other states, and they have filed a lawsuit against the FCC for doing this, so to be continued. And then, one of the very interesting things that WRCO is trying to work through is the new global warming California state mandates. They're beginning to lay out ways for cities to comply with the new regulations and to prepare for global warming. There's also a lot of discussions right now on cannabis and what to be doing with that sort of thing. This morning, I had the pleasure of going with the mayor. We were principals for a day, and that was a lot of fun. I really enjoyed that, and it was also nice, RJ Brandis was there, and he was a principal for a day out at Eleanor Roosevelt. A lot of Norco people there, so it was a lot of fun. Oh, I was there with Jamie Ball, she and I, I think, did you go to Sierra Vista, your children? I'm sorry, but I went to Sierra Vista, so it was fun to go there. It hasn't changed at all, it's amazing, so. Anyway, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Hey. Greg?
Last Thursday, we had the Chino Disalter Authority Board Meeting, and most of the meeting was in regard to the direction that we're debating whether to choose hiring a new general manager or an interim general manager. So we had a presentation by City of Ontario to nominate Tom O'Neill, and I think he's from the City of Ontario as interim GM, to help determine which direction we're going to go. It was a 4-3 vote. I voted no, along with Western Municipal and JCSD. I was Jonathan Daly from the City of Corona, who had retired, was also in the mix, and I'd worked with Jonathan before and had supported him. So the vote was a 4-3, and so Tom O'Neill's going to be our interim general manager for at least the next three, four months. And it was kind of interesting, the way this board does things, as far as substitute motions and even, and they go right against what the attorney says. The attorney will make a recommendation, and this board doesn't listen to him at all. So it's kind of typical. You know? I said that for your benefit. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
I attended the Western Riverside County Waste Water Treatment Plant Meeting with Public Works Director Chad, and it's just, again, it's kind of like what you reiterated about the water system. The one thing that they have done is they're expanding naturally, they're making sure that the plant is up in operations, and still working on getting this thing online, so we can start recapturing some of that treated water back to the system yet. They haven't worked all the bugs out yet, and, but I think probably by, what do you think, by January, February, we'll start seeing some positive return of that treated water somewhere, at least in the near future, somewhere we have a plan. A plan. Not as me we're getting it yet, but a plan. This is a long time in coming, and that's the sad part about it. It's when the Department of Fish and Game decided to put a kibosh on that a couple years ago, we're still, it put a monkey wrench in the situation. I was trying to get water instead of just throwing it into the riverbed. So that is what's happening, and it's a long tedious process. And again, it's like Councilman Newton said, it's attorneys and trying to get over some laws that are on the books and things like that to make sure we do this correctly. But it is an expensive project, so we'll keep you posted on that. And yes, I did have fun, and I was really amazed, principal for the day, I got to go over to Norco Elementary. I tell you, having gone there a couple years ago and in the office, and we saw the pictures when the school district brought out the difference from Measure GG and the accomplishments over there and the redoing. Unbelievable, the progress they made in renovating the front office of that school. I recall going over there a couple years ago and looking and seeing the gals in the front office leaning over file cabinets and boxes, trying to get to help students or come at the counter. They're not falling over each other anymore. That is a well, well-done office, front office and admin for them. It's employee-friendly, but not only that, but I was really impressed with their auditorium over there for the students. It's a great learning experience for the students over there. And if we ever have any need for having a community outreach group over there, there's 200, we can put 200 people in that little auditorium, Andy, so take it, let's take advantage of it, if we can, over there on that side of town. Other than that, we'll move right along into City Council, unless, I didn't see the RTC guide. Nope, don't see him. We'll move right along in here into City Council Consent Calendar Items, and any items want to be pulled?
E and F.
You have D and F. E, okay. Not hearing any other ones? Thank you. Yep, they have a first and a second?
Please vote. We're having some technical difficulties, but it does pass unanimously. Things aren't displayed, but everything...
Okay, you're good?
It's unanimous, yes.
All right.
There's six people.
Okay. We don't know who number six is, then, all right. The chief can explain? Okay. I won't even go there. All right. Greg, you pulled E.
Yep. Chad, a couple of questions for Chad. I'm sorry I didn't have a chance to talk to you the other day, been a little busy. We've had this conversation before on bid analysis, and I guess I'm just going to keep trying to drive this point home, but if you would look at page 13 of 2E, and this, it kind of jumped out at me, is when we do our bid analysis, that, in understanding they can throw quantities or dollar amounts, wherever, but item 21 on page 13 is removal of equestrian fence, four lineal feet, for $460 a foot, $1,800 to tear out four feet of equestrian fencing. And then, item number 22, remove and replace, 575 lineal feet at $45 a foot, for $26,000. Something's whacked in these two, these two items, and I guess my specific question is, why can't we pull that from the bid and say, we're going to self-perform this work and save some money?
We have that option, however, keep in mind, that is being paid for by flood control, so if we pull it out, we would pay for it as a city. So this item, even though it's, like you indicated, it's, doesn't make a lot of sense. It is an overall bid, and it is low bidder. In this particular case, for these particular quantities, these are related to what flood control is funding specifically, not our street improvement project, which we're funding directly, so...
But couldn't we get flood control to pay us for it?
No. Anything that has, they're going to pay for has to be in this bid packet. We can't get it paid for separately.
So I guess on that angle, then, I kind of question the fiduciary relationship we have with flood control going, I think there's a whole bunch of people in this room that would remove four feet of fence for $1,800. Yeah, see a few hands? Okay. I mean, I think we need to spend more time on our analysis, then, and question these things as we go through it.
I think if it's, I would agree with that context, if it's, if it's city dollars that we're spending, but in this case, in this regard, is we want all that work to be done by the contractor with flood control's dollars. And they get all this information. If they object to it, they can, but so far, in any of these types of situations, they have been fine with it. They recognize it's, it's the cost to do it, whatever they choose to place it. But I 100% agree with your point, as far as if it's, if it was my dollars and I saw that, I would have a concern with it, because my dollars are a lot smaller to use, but in this case, it's flood control's money, and if they're willing to pay for it, I'm willing to get it built.
Well, I guess, yeah, and I don't want to belabor the point, but flood control money is our money. I see it on my property tax bill. So I think we just need to drive this home a little harder when we go over this stuff. Okay? That's all I have on that item. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a first and a second?
Councilmembers Newton?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gronmire?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And you had item F?
Yeah. Chad, once again, just on F, I was, on this change order, I was just, I guess this would be on your, it's kind of on the back there, the bluff drive asphalt concrete revision, the breakdown on this.
Correct.
And what I was trying to find with it is, I understand that our first approach wasn't going to work just to do a...
Minor grind and over...
A minor grind and throw an inch and a half on it. So as I was trying to go through this, we're going to go ahead and pulverize all the existing asphalt, correct? On this change, or four inches?
We're going to grind four inches out and remove it?
Right.
And then come back with four inches of new AC.
Okay. And what's the total section? I guess I was looking for, what's the base section on this street?
As far as what the base pave will be versus the top coat?
Yeah, I mean, is it AC over aggregate base?
In most of it, it's going to, in small sections, it's AC over AC, because it's, some of it's 12 inches thick, maybe near River Road.
Really?
And a lot of other sections, it's three to four inches max, and it's just over native.
Hmm. And that should be sufficient?
Yes. If we did a, yeah, if we did a, just a two-inch original, it would be crumbling a couple of years.
Right.
We're very confident that a four-inch will last us quite a long time.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just trying to find the base section in here, and I couldn't, I couldn't figure it out.
And unfortunately, it's, it is all over the place.
It's not.
And so, yeah, the best guess is it's not really there.
Okay.
Only really near River Road, where there was a lot of extra work done, that really, we got 12 inches of AC there.
How old is that road?
I don't know the age, but it's, it's a mess.
Would you, Kevin? I mean, late 80s. Okay.
It was a haul road initially. It went, it never went through, yeah. If I recall right, the intersection by River Road was the only thing they ever improved on. The rest was, I can tell you, that was not really, somebody probably threw some asphalt on it, but I don't think they ever did anything fancy with it.
When I was a kid, it was...
Yeah, it gravelled.
Okay. So it wasn't really an engineered...
No, and we've torn it up probably four times with various water lines that we put through there.
Okay.
For recycled, a couple potable water lines, et cetera. And this paving will actually get done this Saturday, because we originally were planning on doing it, we had to stop because of the issue, realizing it wasn't going to work for what we were going to do, so they, we finally got on the schedule. With this approval, it'll get done this Saturday, the whole section, in one day, just like we did on Corona.
Good. That's the only question I had on that. I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a first, just got a second?
Councilmembers Newton?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gronmire?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Moving on to public comments, this is a time, shooting, when persons in the audience wishing to address the City Council regarding, regarding matters not on the agenda may speak, please complete the speaker card in the back room and present it to the City Clerk, so it may be recognized. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the council's ability to respond to comments not, not on the, on non-agendized matters. At the time such comments are made, the City Council may discuss or take action relative to any general public comment. And with that, I see, oh, he just, he walked back in. And see, timing is everything. Yeah, well, you're, you're going to be up if you, if you don't, unless you want to wait till the very end of the meeting. All right. Mr. Brown from RCTC, we're going to let him make, take this section of public comments so he can get updated on the 91 Express line.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. I'm a lot more used to doing the 15, but...
Yeah, it's, there we go. There we go. I'm not one to be shy of speaking, as you know. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Wayne Brown. I am here to represent the Riverside County Transportation Commission. RCTC and the Orange County Transportation Authority will be upgrading the 91 Express lanes to comply with new transponder technology mandated by the state. This particular upgrade has to be finished by January 1 of 2019. RCTC will also be restriping the westbound 91 Express lanes for continuous access at the county line. This particular issue has been a problem for some time, where people try to enter and exit the 91 Express lanes down by the Orange County and Riverside County line. Now, there, it's a very small area to enter and exit. We are now opening up a two-mile stretch that will be a constant opening and entrance and access point, so we, hopefully that will eliminate some of the backlog and backup that happens at that particular point. This work will require several weekend closures of the 91 Express lanes and intermittent closure of one to three general purpose lanes starting November 16th. No work will occur during the Thanksgiving Day week or weekend. RCTC met with area emergency responders and PIOs earlier this month to provide a detailed explanation of the work. We will be reaching out to area motorists through social media, our websites, overhead signs, local and so-called media, along with major resort destinations and event centers to provide special details of the closures. We are encouraging motorists to expect delays, avoid the area if possible, and allow extra travel time, like all construction activity. Like all construction activity, this work is subject to change and may be rescheduled if we have bad weather or construction issues. Details and maps for each weekend closure will be posted to the 15 Express Lanes website at 15project.info and social media sites at 15ExpressLanes. One additional item to remember is that, again, these particular upgrades are important to us moving forward so we can get to a point where we will eliminate the great need for a lot of hardware when it comes to vehicles. At this point, with this new technology, we should be able to move into an area where your transponder will look more like a barcode in a grocery store. The one item that still will remain required is if you require to be able to use a transponder that is programmable so that if you go from driving in the express lane with one individual up to three and you want to be able to get discounts and that type of thing, you would still need to have one of the transponders that's programmable. At this point in time, the technology is not there to be able to put that kind of information into the future barcode type thing, but it's, I think, coming in the future. So again, this upgrading is important to the whole network. We understand that there may be some delays. We're trying best to make sure that that does not happen, especially around the holiday period, so that we get this work done and out of there when people are trying to get to dinners and festivals and things of that nature. Any questions at this point? I'm ready.
Council, have any questions? Mr. Brown? Okay.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate it. It's always nice to end up here versus the last place I was at.
You didn't get beat up over there, did you?
Well, it's
Nah, it's all right.
There's a couple of stripes back here, but other than that, they'll be good.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Thomas Montes?
You could look up? Just come. Good evening, Mr. Montes.
Oh, good evening, Mayor Hoffman and council members. I'm writing, or I'm speaking here today about a public safety concern that we have on the curved road at Valley View Avenue between Second Street and Third Street. You can see in attachment one, you'll see a map locating the corner. We've had two accidents on this corner in the last two months. I provided the Riverside County Sheriff's Department case numbers for both accidents which occurred. And I've owned a property here on Valley View for just over a year, but I've discussed, had some conversations with my neighbors, and I understand accidents at this corner are very frequent. And in addition, if you're traveling on Valley View from the south to the north approaching this corner, the road has an incline and the curb is at the top of the grade, so it tends to hide the corner from the driver's sight. You can see attachment two, I showed you a copy of what that corner looks like approaching it from the south to the north. I would also like to make a special request for my neighbor directly across the street at 2281 Valley View. She exits onto Valley View just on the north side of this corner, which means she has a blind spot. She can't see to the left to get onto Valley View. And I've talked with her about this and she says it causes her great stress and anxiety because she has to jump out on the road and hammer the gas as quick as she can to avoid being rear-ended. She would need a mirror or something, preferably a stop sign at the corner to keep the traffic calm so she can safely enter the roadway there on Valley View. We have spoken with Norco City Public Works Director Chad Blaze and we've discussed the safety concerns at the corner. Unfortunately, Chad did not have the police report with him and he assumed these accidents were happening down the road on a straight section of Valley View. But we provided some follow-up photos in attachment three, which I have given to Chad and you'll see tire tracks that leave the road right at the corner. So we do feel that guardrails at the corner would have prevented these accidents. And Mr. Blaze also mentioned that a guardrail would restrict shoulder access for pedestrians. We measured the distance from the road to the fence, we got 18 feet. I compared that with the guardrail at Corona Avenue and that was only 15 feet, so we think we meet that requirement also. So to improve the safety for pedestrians, horseback riders, residents, we are requesting that the city of Norco install guardrails, improve the signage at this corner, install a mirror and hopefully a stop sign to help remove the blind spot for the neighbor directly north of the corner and install traffic calming measures. I've talked with the Norco City Fire Department and I know they don't like speed bumps and so they recommend there are other ways. You can see in attachment four, traffic calming measures to slow people down, to make them focus on the road and not look at their cell phone and drive off the edge of that corner. And lastly, we provided a bill for the most recent damage at our property and that's attachment five and six.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Montes. We cannot discuss it up here, as I said, but you've given the information to now the city manager, public works director and that with Cal Fire and the Sheriff's Department. We'll see what they can do. We can't say anything out here at this time.
Sure, I appreciate that.
But appreciate the information. Thank you.
Jeff Cahann?
Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, staff residents. I am here at the moment with my Veterans Memorial Committee hat on to give you an update on our Veterans Day ceremony that will be this Sunday, November 11th. The last time I spoke to you, I was excited to announce that we would be having church service. That situation has been amended. Grace Fellowship had gracefully accepted our request and then after we got into discussions about logistics and other things, it was just, it turned out it was kind of short time to try to put all that together. So they respectfully requested to rescind their invitation, their answer, and so we said yes. We didn't want to put any stress on them. So we're going back to just our normal schedule. We'll start at 10 o'clock as we were going to start anyway. But we've got a full program planned. Gunny Ernie from last year has also gracefully accepted our request to come back. So many veterans are excited to see Gunny come back. And it is the 100th anniversary, so we've got a few special things that we're going to be putting into our program. So we're excited to see you out there. If you're normally a church-going person, this is a Sunday, so maybe get up early and go to your earlier service and then come join us at 10 o'clock. And we look forward to being able to honor our veterans here in Norco. So I'm going to take that hat off and just put on a resident hat for a moment. And I was up here a couple of months ago when we were discussing what to do about Measure R and I asked you to please allow the residents to take this on, to form a grassroots group. And you had the faith in us, you gave us permission, you allowed us to run with that. And I just wanted to thank you for that vote of confidence. And as the results have shown, we were successful and able to be able to increase the revenues to keep our town well-maintained and prosperous into the future. So thank you for your confidence in allowing us to run with that. And one last thing, sadly, I think everybody knows, but I just wanted to ask, Pat Walsh was buried today, a veteran and a wonderful, longtime Norco volunteer. So I would respectfully ask that you close tonight's meeting in honor of Pat Walsh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're reading my mind. Thank you.
Bonnie Slager?
Good evening. I know it's been almost a month, but the Navy birthday ride that I had talked about so much, and I think it turned out to be something that really further cemented our relationship with the Navy as our neighbors. And I received a letter from Captain Dalkey and I would like to share it with you. Please accept my warmest thanks for the hard work and hospitality shown by Norco Horsemen's Association and the city during our Navy birthday horse ride event last Saturday. Despite the weather, it was very heartening to see so many horses and riders out there. The birthday cake and cupcakes were most appreciated as well and certainly highlighted the strong support I know we can always count on from our neighbors in the community. Please pass on my special thanks to the NHA membership, especially the cleanup crew, I call them the poop patrol, as well as the team who provided safety instruction and accompanied Captain Brambeck and myself during the ride. This event could not have taken place without the fantastic support of you and your membership. And I think you guys know, but for everybody in the audience, the Parks and Rec folks were great and they did a lot of the planning. And Jamie, this was her first event and she got rained on and everything and it still came off very well. So anyway, I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. It was a great day.
Lisa Rogers?
Good evening, council members and mayor. I wanted to talk to you about the Measure R videos that were so well-done on the record. And I was really kind of hoping that maybe you would consider continuing doing that. Throughout the last couple of months, there were some many questions that kept on coming up to the surface. For example, how do our trash contracts actually work? Possibly, you know, getting the word out about this oversight committee, maybe picking a topic that comes up in a council meeting and maybe actually just having one of those topics once a month. I think they were very informative. I think they were very professionally done. It was on the record. It might maybe alleviate some people thinking that they don't know. I understand that most of these topics are discussed here at council meetings, but as we can see, we don't get a huge turnout of our general population. And maybe it might just alleviate some of the assumptions or allegations or insinuations. So I would like you to consider that. Thank you so much for doing those and appreciate the opportunity for me to come out and speak to you.
Thank you, Lisa. I think our community outreach, people are aware where. All right. Thank you.
Corinne Holder?
Good evening, Corinne.
Good evening. I just came from Pat Walsh's services. Lot going on this week. I wanted to thank you guys for your support and the community at large. We've lost a very dear member of our community. It's been a really long day. But I want to thank you guys for coming out and helping and showing your support. And Pat is one of those people that brings our community together. So I just came from his services today. This has been, he passed away two weeks ago. We had NHA come together, the Fair Horse Week, Rural. All of our council members have been very supportive. They've reached out to other community entities. Sixth Street Deli donated all the food today. Even though services were paid for, FFA came through with beautiful flowers for the service. Beautiful flowers for the after-party, the celebration of life. And Pat is just one of those people. My husband, we met him through NHA, through Casino Night, was invited to work with SAS, so which is the mounted shooting. And just one of those people that brings other people together. Works with a lot of different entities and it just shows how much our community can come together and do something for someone that deserves it. There's a lot of other things going on lately with elections, Measure R. We truly appreciate that support from all of our community members, but from all of those same organizations. But I just wanted to say thank you for coming out to see Pat and Carrie today, send him on his way. And just acknowledge that there's something special here. And everything that you guys do makes a difference. Everything that these groups and organizations do makes a huge difference. And they can come together and pull something off that is absolutely amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Corinne. It was an honor for this council at the day of the cowboy to do a certificate while he was still alive and appreciation for that. And we, I think all five of us up here, everybody in this community was truly missed Pat and what he gave. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes public comments.
With that, I'll close public hearing and comments and go on to 5A. This is, I simply need a motion to continue? I'm on the second reading?
No.
No, it's the second reading?
It's the second reading.
Oh. Right here, second, huh? Second.
Council members Newton?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Gronmire?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Hey, moving right on to 6A. Fiscal year 2017-18 year-end budget. Gina, that's yours.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and city council members. I'm happy to be here tonight to show you how well we did in fiscal year 2017-18 with the support of council and staff's diligence and saving money. And in fiscal year 2017-18, which begins July 1st, 2017 and ending June 30th, 2018, revenues exceeded expenditures in both our general fund, our water and sewer funds. This combination of improving revenues and better expenditure control resulted in better-than-expected increases in fund balance in both the general fund and water sewer enterprise funds. Our independent auditors, White, Nelson, Dale, Evans, have completed their field work, are in the process of completing the CAFR, our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. We'll be coming back to you in the early spring with that final report. This will be a brief overview of the general fund and sewer and water fund status. There is a detailed report that we have online in the website under the Fiscal and Support Department and we'll provide that additional information for you. The general fund, as you can see, ended the year at 19.7 million with revenues and 19.4 million in expenditures, a savings of $295,000. This was added to our original fund balance, 11.3 million, for a total of 11.6 million. I'll briefly go over the history. It goes in more detail in the staff report. But we did start the year with a $1.9 million deficit. At mid-year, we came in and indicated that we had higher revenues, sales tax looks like was doing better at the time, and community development fees. And also we came in with some reductions, anticipated reductions in our sheriff's department budget as a result of the delayed hiring of the traffic enforcement team. As we go through the fiscal year, when we get to our budget process, we do another year-end projection. Now, that does not modify the budget. That is just a snapshot in time as we're moving towards the end of the fiscal year. That particular snapshot indicated we were going to have a deficit of about $400,000. Now, as we reached year-end, what occurred was we had additional savings in our sheriff's budget of about, let's see if I'll get that detail for you. Actually, I'll share more of that in the next slides. And salary savings due to vacancies And salary savings due to vacancies, project savings, professional services savings, supply savings, which allowed us to, as well as revenue increases in community development. And that allowed us to achieve a $295,000 fund balance. I want to note that most likely will not happen again. The savings are one-time expenditure savings in the sheriff's budget. We've hired those individuals. In terms of the fire department, we're always surprised when we get savings and I don't anticipate that happening again. And our revenues, we are achieving some limits in our sales tax. I'll get into that in deeper in another slide. And our development activities, although doing well at the moment, in the future, we're Moving along to the water fund, we achieved $11.7 million in revenues and $9.8 million in expenditures for a net capital, working capital increase of $1.8 million. That's added to our existing working capital balance for a total of $1.5 million. Now, this particular year, we are going to be reserving, as you're aware, we did a rate study and included an operating reserve fund and a rate stabilization fund. We will be putting in reserves, $1.2 million for an available fund balance or for capital projects of $3.3 million from the water fund. And the same story goes for the sewer fund. We've had savings from anticipated costs for sewer treatment, salaries and benefits, vacancies, and claim settlements. Our, the revenues were $7.9 million, expenditures were $5.7 million for savings of $2.2 million added to our working capital, a total working capital of $8 million. We reduced that by $1.4 million to add to our operating reserve in the sewer fund for a total of $6.6 million available for sewer capital projects. And other funds, briefly, we're going to go over those. Gas tax, we made a minor adjustment in our revenues during the year. We did not bring this to council. We made the decision to move our SB 1 funds to a capital funds so that Chad could easily see that money and possibly spend it. So our revenues are, our actual revenues are lower than we had anticipated because we did move those funds. And we have expenditures of $691,000, which reduced, excuse me, the fund balance by $111,000. We have a remaining fund balance of $547,000 in the gas tax fund, which Chad is spending. For our MPDS fund, we've got a minor deficit of $2,000. We're going to be getting that money from Riverside County to make up for that amount. For miscellaneous grants and CDBG, we combined those funds together in this picture, a total amount of $165,000 in revenues, $219,000 in expenditures, and delayed reimbursement for those grants. The projects completed or started were Ingalls Park, the ADA restroom project upgrade, as well as the ADA upgrade at the community center. Our emergency management program grant fund purchased about $9,000 worth of VOC supplies. Our state homeland security program grant funding was about $2,600 for protection equipment. Our landscape maintenance districts had some activity this year. About $790,000 or so was spent on trail maintenance in the LMD fund. And that's the reason why you're seeing what looks like expenditures are greater than revenues, but we did have fund balance. Our remaining fund balance in LMD 4 is $311,000. LMD 2 is still in deficit mode and will continue to be in deficit mode. It's currently at $21,366, excuse me, let's see. That's the current amount that it drew into fund balance. The current deficit, let me just bring that up for a second. The ending fund balance is $47,000 negative in LMD 2. LMD 3 was over expended by $3,500. LMD 5, some savings there of $11,000. And LMD 1, overspent by $1,000, $1,600. General fund revenues, I'll briefly go over these. Motor vehicle license, vehicle license fees are consistent. Once we find out from the state of California what they are, we budget for them and we receive them. Our property tax was about $20,000 less than we anticipated due to less-than-anticipated secured and unsecured property taxes. Franchise fees were about $27,000 higher than we anticipated, basically for a refused franchise fee, revenue that we received. Other taxes, TOT was higher by $7,800. Our property transfer tax was higher by about $6,900. Other revenues, we received more than anticipated, about $109,000 by combination of revenue sources, emergency medical subscription, dog license, animal shelter, fees, and reimbursements. We do have ambulance fines in this category, which is related to penalties that are attributed to our ambulance services, AMR, when they are not timely in their response. Community development fees were, let's see, I think I might have mentioned the wrong number, $120,000 for, higher than we anticipated in other revenues. Development fees were higher by $109,000, basically due to building, planning, and engineering activities. Community services fees higher by about $50,000. We had more events in Ingalls and youth sports were higher than anticipated. Our interest income is higher. We are investing our reserves in productive investments and we're getting more from that. And this is also interest from our special asset fund, which I'll talk about later. Fines and penalties increased by $22,000 and intergovernmental, a minor amount of $5,700. Again, these are adjustments compared to our year-end estimates during the year, at the end of the year. Sales tax trends, I'll spend a little bit of time on this. It's a story that's going to be ongoing. As you can see, we had the height of sales tax in the year 2000. We were at $6.2 million. We went down to $3.3 million during the recession. We reached the highest amount yet in fiscal year 1617 at $6.5 million. And we were anticipating over this time to slowly go up with all the new economic development that we're having. In 2018, what I've done here, I've added these three columns. You're seeing in the darker maroon, the 2018 adopted amount. The lighter rust is the amended amount. This is what we thought we were going to get at mid-year. And then during year-end, we still thought we were going to get the amount that we anticipated from sales tax. But what's happened are two events. One, the state of California basically held back money from us one year and we received it late. So we received it in 1718. As a result, we anticipated our total amount would go up to $7.1 million. That's mainly due to the amount that was delayed payment by the state of California test. We put a little bump in there with some, the new development that we had. Then at year-end, we had some assurances from our consultant that we were still going to receive that revenue. What we slowly became aware of is that the state of California, or the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, formerly known as State Board of Equalization, implemented a new revenue receipt system. And that system is not behaving as anticipated. So there is a significant delay in our receipts. HGL, our consultant is working with us, they're accounting for everything. As a result, we received $6.86 million less than what we anticipated. Now, there is a dark side to this as well, is that receipts aren't coming in as we anticipated from our used car sales, building and construction, and fuel stations. So although we're going to be getting the revenue we anticipated in the first place, our trends are flattening, which is something we've mentioned for a while now. We're hoping to come back at mid-year and possibly bump this a little bit, but we're just, we're going to hold off on that.
Gina, if I could interrupt you real quick. So I know that the DOF is holding this. Are we going to anticipate getting that tax, that sales tax money or not?
Yes, we are going to get it back. It's a matter of when. They've, in some cases, facilities such as Target have difficulty getting that information to them. The program was difficult for the end-users to use, to get, to actually notify the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. And then once those revenues are there, it's a process of getting it to us. But we've been assured by HGL we're going to get everything that we should be getting as a result. They're keeping track with the state of California.
But that's HGL, which is a private company, not the Bureau of Inquisition or the DOF.
They're going to be on it with them. They're going to make sure we get every penny.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. And I'm going to bring up a familiar chart. It's been updated. In terms of sales tax, City of Norco receives only $6.8 million of the total amount of sales tax earned within the city limits. We anticipated that amount was $52.8 million in fiscal year 1718. And as you can see, all the other parties that receive quite a bit more than we do from the sales tax that we currently have in the city. And the same story goes with our property tax. This has been updated as well. And out of $38.4 million earned within city limits, the general fund receives $1.9 million of that amount. And you can see all the other entities that receive the remainder of that. Our TOT tax is very healthy and we're looking forward to more hotels within city limits. And as you can see, the amount has doubled over the last five years. And even with the limited rebate the city provides to our new hotel operator, we can, we are looking forward to seeing this trend continue. In terms of general fund expenditures, if you look at the Sheriff's Department, the far left, you can see that there is about $185,000 in savings. That was based on our year-end estimate. When you compare it to the rust-colored bar there, the total amount of savings from the Sheriff's Department due to the delayed implementation of the traffic enforcement team was $661,000. There's, and I should add in there too, was, there was also contract savings in there too. We are very conservative when we project our contract expenditures. And fortunately, this particular year, we received additional savings. And that is one of the big factors in reducing what we originally anticipated as being a deficit in the general fund. Fire and suppression, CAL FIRE was $259,000 less than our year-end estimate than anticipated. Building, parks, and recreation were $90,000 less than anticipated. Salary savings, project savings were included in that. Non-departmental was $91,000 less in expenditures for the fiscal year than anticipated. Majority of that's professional services. Administration, Finance, and Economic Development actually did finish the year in a positive condition. But what we do at year-end is we attribute, we actually pay for, in a sense, all the time, the vacation leave time that isn't used. So that gets placed within the individual department's budgets. And that brought admin, finance, and economic development to a negative $38,000. Planning, building, safety, and code compliance, and these were contractual services increases and some legal costs. Animal control, majority of that is a worker's comp issue in that department. The teen, senior citizens program, teen and youth program, senior citizens program had $45,000 savings, majority of that is salary savings in the senior center and some utility savings. City council and attorney, $20,000, mostly in the city attorney area, attributed to code enforcement savings. And public works and engineering, again, salary savings. And I'll briefly take you through our fund balance. We started the year with $11.3 million, June 30th, 2017. Our actual revenues were $19.7 million, expenditures were $19.4, for a net savings of $295,000, which increased our fund balance to $11.6 million. And what we do with that $11.6 million is we basically identify a reserve, an emergency reserve for the general fund, at 25% of our budget. And that is $5.2 million. We also remove, in a sense, our special projects, deposits, and donations for $365,000. So we have uncommitted fund balance of $6 million. And that follows the goals of the city council. Our general fund, fund balance trend, as you can see, this is really good news. We are actually slightly higher than we had anticipated at this point last year, at $11.6 million. This represents 56% of general fund expenditures. And I should make a moment, take a moment here, Andy may want to jump in as well. We do not see this trend continue based on our existing revenue stream. So we're, as you know, we're in flux at this moment in terms of the latest news, but just want to be cautious of revenues. Our sales taxes are our largest revenues at this, revenue at this point. And we are hopeful, we have, we will have continued economic development. And we're waiting for additional news. Special asset revenue fund. Get a little into detail for those who aren't familiar with this fund. This was established in 2008 to accumulate revenues from one-time asset sales or special receipts. Interest earnings are transferred to the general fund, I'd mentioned that earlier. The fund achieved a maximum spendable fund balance of, which was cash, of $1.5 million in fiscal year 2012. At the end of this current fiscal year, the spendable fund balance was $1.1 million. In addition, the fund has over $3.9 million in long-term receivables from sale of assets. We will get that money, we just can't, it isn't cash at this point. The spendable balance of funds in the special asset revenue fund can be appropriated for any legal expenditure of the city by the city council. However, city council resolution requires a supermajority approval for appropriation from the special asset revenue fund. And this is another picture of our revenues, expenditures, and fund balance trend and showing that our fund balance has increased to $11.6 million. This final slide, it shows our capital project spendable fund balance. And this is different than last time. We've got some asterisks in there, which I'll explain. The second column, working capital contributions, as you heard earlier, we have some addition to the sewer and water fund capital projects or capital fund balance, working capital fund balance. And that amount includes the 1718 contribution and the anticipated 1819 savings. The asterisks there are indicating that. So if we work our way across from left to right, you will see that we've got additional revenue of $13 million in total for all those funds. We have expenditures of $26.2 million, anticipated expenditures, $26.2 million. Chad has quite a substantial CIP for this year. And at the end of, when we, we're anticipating when we get to fiscal year 1920, we'll have as much as $12 million. Again, part of this is looking at the fund performance for the current year for water and sewer. But those particular funds are looking healthy now with the building of the reserves and the rate stabilization fund. We're able to contribute to capital projects. And that concludes the presentation. And as I mentioned earlier to the public, if they would like to go to the website, they'll see the complete staff report in detail. And we're available for any questions you may have.
Council, any questions of staff? Burwin?
No.
Robin?
No.
Kevin?
So Gina, we have the 25% emergency reserve. Do you think in this day and age, that's enough?
Fifty, or 25%, but we actually have, our reserves are 56% of our total expenditures. So we're actually...
Do you think it's enough in a catastrophic incident?
I guess it would depend on the catastrophe. I'll leave that to Andy. Anything, I could think of a few. It depends on the... It depends on the catastrophe.
Maybe at some point, Andy, we might talk about that, or I'll give you a...
Yeah, you do. You do. Yeah. We did address that issue in the staff report. There are no set specific guidelines pertaining to the amount that you should have in fund balance. This then, it depends on various situations that are applicable to specific cities. And so if, for example, you have the ability to generate revenues from other sources in an emergency situation, then your fund balance, you keep a lower fund balance. Your revenue is diversified, you keep a lower fund balance. But if, on the other hand, your situation is such that there is going to be a lot of demand on that fund balance, and your revenue is not diversified so that you can be significantly impacted in situations of economic declines, then you need to have a larger fund balance to cushion against that. But what I can tell you is that $11.6 million, which is what the city currently has, is a lot better than when we were $2 million in fund balance.
Yeah, I was there.
Certainly, we have made significant progress, and I think the city is better off today than it was five years ago when we had $2 million in fund balance.
So Andy, do you think that we need to memorialize in some way rather than the percentage that we have kind of official? Or do you think right now, just something to think about, or...
Yeah, certainly, one of the things that the City Council did, I believe, back in 1997, 1998, was to adopt a resolution that requires a minimum 25% of operating, annual operating expenditures to be kept in fund balance. Obviously, when we reached the recession period here back in 2008, the city wasn't able to maintain that. Clearly, we have that now, plus additional $6 million above and beyond that 25%. Yeah, the City Council can adopt any policy it desires with respect to situations whereby the city can draw on that fund balance. A lot of cities do have policies like that. Again, the city already has a policy setting aside amount that is equal to 25% of their operating budget as, for emergency purposes. We can go above and beyond that to outline specific criteria by which the city can dip into the remaining fund balance.
Okay. Well, Andy, I guess maybe think about if we should raise it or if you're comfortable with it. The second thing is, I noticed that we're, the LMDs are not, I mean, is there a certain point when, with the LMDs, that we have to sort of sit back and ask some hard questions in terms of just operating expenses?
Yeah. If you look, if you look at the numbers that were reported this evening, except for LMD number two, which historically has not been able to fund itself...
I was trying, I was trying to be general. Okay, LMD two, let's just be specific then. LMD two, at what point do we...
I think Brian Petrie, who's managing that LMD, as well as the city engineer, we are going to be having meetings this, this spring to determine how that situation can, can be addressed.
We actually are scheduling meetings in January to start early, particularly with District Two. And the discussion of a 218 hearing will be part of that discussion.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Greg?
Thank you. Gina, good report. I wanted to follow up from last week when the mayor, Pro Tem, had asked me about other revenues. And we were just talking about ambulance fines, and we thought there were ambulance fees. Ambulance fines are a penalty incurred by AMR when CAL FIRE determines they're not responding in time. Or what I'd like to, is a little more clarification on that. Is that situation ever occurred? And if so, how, how is that money transferred and moved around?
I can tell you to move, it's, part of it is reduced from CAL FIRE's contract. We also get a check from the county. I'll let you.
So the county of Riverside has the contract with AMR for, for all the service areas. In that contract, it establishes response times based on the community type. So whether it's municipal, urban, rural, and there's response times in there. When AMR doesn't meet those response times in the City of Norco, they have to tell on themselves. And in August, the city will receive a check based on that amount, which is typically in this, in this city, about $10,000. Secondly, on our quarterly bills, there's a credit for disposable supplies, if you will, that I believe is something, we just got the rate letter last week, forgive me, but it's, it's $4 a call or something that they have to pay the city when we respond, use our, our goods and paramedic supplies that they reimburse the city for. And that comes back through the quarterly CAL FIRE bills from, from headquarters. So there's two different, two different pieces to it.
So back on the response times, that, you track that from, like, the time of the call to, and when they show up, and that's just part of your standard operating procedure?
So they actually track it, as well as Riverside County EMS. And it all comes through, through that ambulance contract. We, or any fire department, don't have anything to do with it. But essentially, I want to say it's for, for a city, I want to say it's eight minutes for AMR to arrive on scene. If they're not, then they have to pay that fine.
Tell me this doesn't happen very often, or does it?
Actually, we get this money every year. It does happen every year.
Oh, so they...
It's very substantial for...
Pretty consistent, then.
For busy cities, but yes, we get it every year. Typically, the same amount. You know, our call volume goes up 3% to 5% a year.
Right.
So that, that fine would go up essentially 3% to 5% every year. It'd go up incrementally. But it's, AMR being a for-profit company is, that's how the county essentially enforces their response times and their staffing.
I wish we had this before we voted on that proposition yesterday. Might have put some other insight into that. Thanks, Chief. Gina, one more question. On Special Asset Revenue Fund, so we keep that money in an investment account, I'm assuming.
Yes, there's an investment account, and, but there's also a receivable in there that is outstanding.
So we're earning interest on that?
Correct.
$1.1 million. Does the interest earned go back into the Special Asset Revenue account?
This time, it goes to the general fund.
Okay. Interest goes to the general fund on this. Okay. That's all I have. Thanks.
Let me, because I almost had the same questions, and Kevin did the one about the 25%. And I agree that we, we ought to look at that, maybe a projection to see if we need to raise it to, as far as our minimum we have on reserves. But if you think the 25% is, is adequate, I'm, I'm always worried about the catastrophic downturn.
25% is, again, for emergencies.
Okay.
You know, to cover for shortfalls in revenues due to economic cycles.
Okay.
That is something we can address separately.
Now Gina, on the Special Asset Revenue Fund, so I'm reading in, correct me if I'm wrong, so the maximum that can be in there is $1.5 million?
No.
Okay.
It can be, Andy has a history on it. We've sold assets, those, the selling, the cash from that went into that fund specifically.
I think what that says is, at one point, we had $1.5 million in that, in that fund. And currently, that amount is $1.1 million. Obviously, since we had the $1.5 million, there have been some transactions going through that fund specifically. The city purchased property for $805,000 from that fund, and that reduced it from 1.5 to a low amount. But there have been also monies going in, into that fund from the receipt of the receivables that have been identified also.
Okay. I just don't want the public to think that we have this slush fund of a couple million dollars we're not dealing with. It's...
It's not. I think we report on this every year.
Okay. All right.
As part of our budget process, as part of our year-end financial report, so.
Okay.
That's pretty transparent.
No further questions?
One.
Okay. Go ahead, Greg.
Sorry, you just got me thinking about that. On the Special Asset Fund, and stop me if I can't talk about it, but the property that we're selling...
That we purchased, or was...
No, that we're going to sell.
Okay.
That, that we're in negotiations to sell.
That's correct. Now, I hope we need to close escrow by the end of next month.
Right.
Yeah.
I thought that was coming up soon.
That's correct.
Would, and it's not a lot of money, but would that money go to Special Asset Fund?
That's correct.
Okay. And on that same note, the, the penalties that they have been paying to extend the terms.
That's correct.
Those penalties, or however you want to, for lack of a better term, are those, do those go into the Special Asset Fund also?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Do other, further questions? Gina, do you have any, I mean, Cheryl, do you have any cards on this? Open up, please.
No cards on this item.
Jeff, get it on to her. Good evening, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've only got three minutes, so I got to try to do this quick. Gina, could you go back to that slide that had the property tax allocation? This has been bugging me, and I just, maybe now's a good time to ask if I can get this done. So right now, I see that of all the property tax that we collect, 24% is being withheld to satisfy the successor agency obligations. So off the top of my head, right now, it's like 120, something, 120 million, over 100 million of RDA in that neighborhood, right? So if that $9.2 million was not to be taken out, we don't get that $9 million, right? We had this conversation very briefly, but I wanted to just clarify. All of the rest of the pie would get that 24% distributed as evenly as it is now, a little, almost, right? Because I know the school district has some of that RDA money. It's kind of complicated, but basically, so we're, we're losing a little bit of income on that 5% that we're getting back. But we're also getting almost $10 million of successor agency money, however you want to say it, satisfied or removed, whatever the phrase is, right? But I mean, so if that 24%, $9.2 million were to go away today, we'd only get...
A portion of it.
A very small portion of it, just like we're only getting the 5% right now, right? So I'm just making sure that the way my brain works, I'm looking at that, we're, the City of Norco is paying, in a sense, by having property tax withheld, but we're having it withheld at such a small percentage, yet we're satisfying a huge amount of RDA debt. So when I talk to people about the RDA debt and the monies and the assets that the RDA has bought and benefited the town over the decades, we're now paying it back literally at 8 cents on the dollar, 10 cents on the dollar, something like that, right? So, and, so I realize at some point, what was it, 2033, 2039, something? When does that go away?
2036.
2036, okay. So, and I know that it's not just going to disappear instantly. There's some that expire sooner than others, but it's a pretty, in a three-minute thing, that's a pretty short way to describe it, right?
Yes. And, and just to add a little, a little bit more, as you recall, we refunded some of these bonds.
Right.
And a little bit of that refunding is now in the City of Norco's slice, because the savings was, we received a portion of it, as well as other entities, pastor entities.
Right. Okay. So that's great news. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Is that all the cards? Cheryl?
That's all the cards, yes.
Close public hearing, and bringing back, any further questions of staff?
I don't have a question. May I make just a comment on what Jeff said?
Go ahead.
That's a really, really important point, because one of the things that keeps coming up is that we owe all this money. And maybe that's somehow, I don't know how you do it, but maybe that's one of the things that maybe we do one of the videos that was recommended, is we talk about the fact that we don't owe all this, because it's a, somebody who's out there who is spreading that, and it's just not true. So put it under your cap, maybe we can add that.
A lot of pie charts. Okay. I know, I know, Kevin, I know.
You know what? We can use water.
Oh, he just, he just dissed you, didn't he? Your, your water, your, your water charts.
Everybody's...
I know. That was good. Be careful, be careful. She's going to have the big hat in a month.
For the record, I, I liked it, you know? But you know what? We got to knock down the movie star a little bit, you know?
Be careful there. All right. This is a receiving file. Do I have a motion to have a receiving file? First and a second.
Councilmembers Newton, Bash, Hannah, Mayor Pro Tem, Grunmire.
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. This adoption of the emergency operation plan into the City of Norco's emergency management system. Chief Lane, it's all yours.
By me up first, sir?
You made him stay here because he wrote it?
Every word. Every word. So, no, it's a huge undertaking. Good evening again, Honorable Mayor, Council, staff, and residents. This was a huge undertaking that when I came back here three and a half years ago, is your fire battalion chief, it was number one thing on Andy's list. I need an emergency operations plan updated. And he's been after me ever since. This time last year, we had the complaint, the plan completely rewritten after meetings with staff and, staff and staff. And then the state released a new template, and we had to start all over. And so I've asked Captain Camp to join me up here tonight, because Captain Camp painstakingly retyped this entire document into the most current format that there is for the state of California. So let's talk about our emergency operations plan. Referred to as the EOP, it is the Foundation for Response and Recovery of a Localized Emergency or Catastrophic Disaster. To name a few, floods, fires, earthquakes, terrorism, public health emergencies, infestation, excuse me, and there's many more within, within the plan. Many of you are familiar with SIMS, NIMS, and ICS. The plan is compliant with all three. NIMS being the federal incident management system, SIMS being the state version, is mandated by state and federal law. This plan is required to be in place for the city to receive grant funding related to these emergency activities. And it ensures that all entities are on the same sheet of music nationwide, not just city to city here locally, but nationwide, it's the framework. As I mentioned, SIMS is the standardized emergency management system put in place by CAL OES. It instills that fundamental structure of how we manage emergencies out of the city's NIMS is the, the federal version of it, and many of you in this room have had to take IS 700 and 800 with your employer, ICS 100 and 200. That is what this plan is and in compliance with. That is what this plan is and in compliance with. The ICS system, Incident Command System, is what the first responders use every day for command and control of emergency incidents. If I was to respond to a structural fire right now, hoping the pager goes off, but it's turned off. Robin made me turn it off. We use the Incident Command System all day, every day. The Incident Command System can range from very small incident to a very large incident. It was developed in California in the late 70s in response to the wildland fires, for those that are of age to remember at the time. I'm not looking at you, sir. I'm not, I'm not, I'm sorry. I was looking over there. So, it has become the model for the world. ICS is used in every, I don't want to say every country, but many countries throughout the world. Like I said, we use it for very small to very large. Our large wildland fires that you see are the Incident Command System at its best. California is the model for the world. And this is an organization chart for ICS, where you have an incident commander and then it flows down to operations, planning, logistics, and finance. Again, this is what we use day in and day out in the first responder world. And this is the organization chart for an EOC. An EOC director would be the city manager and then it branches down. You'll see that under operations, you have a fire and rescue branch, which has a representative, but ultimately, this is used inside the EOC, whereas ICS is used out in the field. This chart is to support essentially the responders in the field and ensure that operations within the city can continue during a major event. Just a little flow path. So, our Norco EOC, which you'll see a photo of in a moment, is what is referred to as a hot EOC. And again, I want to thank staff for their countless hours in the last three years of getting our EOC where it is today. Three years ago, as the young man over there could attest, Matt, our EOC lived in a closet at the Hillside Fire Station. And when El Nino was predicted, Andy very clearly ordered that EOC to be stood up. Through the various grants, et cetera, over the years, EMPG, we have the most current technology in that EOC. I can tell you that Matt and his counterparts visit the Hillside Station a couple times a month to ensure everything is operational. He can sit at his desk and see every one of our computers and its status. We have redundancy set up so that in the event we have to move in there, essentially all of fire admin is our EOC. So, what used to be the community room classroom is the war room, if you will, for the EOC. And then our conference room becomes that for Andy and our dignitaries, as well as our offices. So, we are very proud to have redundant networks in that facility of three networks. Phone systems, computers, the ability, and we now have the ability to print our own maps and public information out of the facility on a large plotter. Again, thanks to Matt for finding that for us. But all staff before you played an integral part in this plan in getting to where we are today. This is our EOC today. Again, it used to be up and set up in classroom format. Staff here will tell you how much they love coming to these trainings, but we have them a couple times a year. I know they look enthused, but they're ready to go, I can tell you that. We get high marks from the county frequently on being a city of a small size that has our stuff together. As you visit our surrounding cities, you won't find another emergency operations center. They're still trying to sort that out. We're ready to go. We train frequently, like I said, we replace equipment every year. It's truly something to be proud of. I want you all to rest assured that we're prepared today for what will come to us tomorrow. In large part due to Andy's support and his direction, we're ready. With that, if there's any specific questions about the emergency operations plan, Don will be happy to answer them.
Newton, any questions back there?
Captain. I appreciate all your work. And I do understand that being a captain, you work for a living, not like a chief. Thank you.
Kevin?
I just really want to thank you, and Andy, hats off to you. We talked about this when CAL FIRE first came aboard. The very next meeting, we had all kinds of stuff being put in play. Andy, staff, you guys, and I know, because I really look at the other cities, we are so far ahead of some of the other cities, they're not ready. And I really, really appreciate Andy, you're pushing this through. It's fantastic. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Putting together, spending all this money for something I hope we never use. Thank you.
Robbie?
So, I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Alright. So, the first one, and I emailed you about this the other day, it talks about the Emergency Services Coordinator.
Yes.
Which you said was yourself. So, my question to you would be, would that be something that would be put in the definitions or glossary or on the table as titles? Or would it just go battalion chief in a general sense, so somebody reading this would know that that would be?
We keep it general. As people come and go, we don't fill names to the positions.
Okay.
We have separate working documents for us to know who's going to what seat. Much of that training still has to continue, but through city ordinance and our contract, the cities identified the CAL FIRE Battalion Chief as the Emergency Services Coordinator to take care of this aspect. Very different from the city manager as the EOC Director, who is in charge of all those operations.
Okay. So, is that listed somewhere in this specific document, or it's in another document?
As a sister document for our plans for the actual EOC.
Okay.
And who fills what role, so I can just briefly throw it out. While we're still recruiting, not recruiting, identifying staff to fill roles, understand that the EOC positions aren't necessarily what the folks do for their day jobs.
Gotcha.
Could be dramatically different. For instance, in the ICS world, Chief Tovar, who we toured City Hall with earlier, my partner from Eastvale, he is a logistics section chief on a type-one incident management team. Chief Iku sits in the back of the room, is one of our incident commanders of our type-one CAL FIRE teams. Type-one is the highest level. We're proud to have them, a phenomenal resource for us. But we go into different tracks. I could be a finance, I happen to be in the operations section, so, which I do on a daily basis, but others choose other options. So, we have, Brian is a redundant backup to Andy, depending if we're on a 12 or 24-hour shift, we may need two DUC Directors, otherwise Andy would be very tired. Gina obviously will be finance. Chad, for instance, is in the operations section. So, depending on the type of emergency, it may not be fire, it may not be law enforcement, it could very well be public works. And he's the operations section chief for that incident. So, we have plans, we have, it's all done in pencil for who sits on what seat based on the event.
Gotcha. That makes sense. And then the last question I had was all the forms in Appendix D. Can I assume that those are all electronic, like the general message form and the after-action questionnaire and all that stuff? And these just here for our informational purposes?
They absolutely are.
Okay.
And again, our friends of IT have loaded them on every computer in the room, they're on the drives, they can be accessed from anywhere. We have wireless printers upon printers upon printers, so short of killing trees and being environmentally sensitive, yes, they're all there.
Alright, so those were my only questions. Thank you both. I can't imagine having to do all this, but your work, your hard work is evident in the report, so thank you.
With one arm. He had shoulder surgery. It was really amazing. It was, it was something.
Awesome.
Robbie?
Thank you, guys, for putting that report together and everything, and I'm familiar with most of those SIMS and NIMS and stuff like that. We've had to go through that ever since we started the NART team, but I think with all the training that everybody does and everything, that we're pretty well-prepared with all the teams in town, and hopefully we'll never have to use it, but I feel like we are well-prepared for it, and thank you, guys.
You're very welcome.
Chief, I have a couple of questions on it.
Okay.
This CAL FIRE and most fire personnel, you guys go through the NIMS and SIMS training and ICS, I mean, it's what you live on, it's your life. What I'm concerned about is, I know we do tabletop exercises, correct? How many times a year do we do those?
Our last one was in May at Nellie Weaver Hall, we hosted for the region.
Okay, so we're doing at least once or twice a year a tabletop exercise involving our employees, or?
Yes, so we have what is referred to as the Northwest Comm Meeting, and that encompasses Arupa Valley, Eastvale, Norco, Corona, and the city of Riverside, and then the County Emergency Management Department. Our next meeting is the week after Thanksgiving. We come together every quarter.
Okay.
And to make it fiscally prudent, our group does these exercises together. Essentially, we're all small cities, with the exception of Riverside. So, we come together, there is a plan, there is a framework, our county emergency coordinators is phenomenal, and keeping us on the go. It happens, we train frequently.
And my other concern is, is naturally, our city employees is, we all been through it, we take, we take the standard NIMS and SIMS training as part of the, our system here, part of being even a volunteer, but how often do we refresh that? And maybe Brian or Andy could, for our employees that may fill into that position, because like I said, with, I know in Sheriff's Department and Fire, it's always, it's always repetitive in what you're doing, and you understand that system. But some of our employees, they only hit it once or twice a year, maybe that's direction of what we can, if there's a refresher course set up for the guys in the field that are out there and to understand why you have ICS, why you have NIMS and SIMS, other than a one-time, okay, it's, Myrna has it on their, on their job requirement, okay, yeah, you completed that, and that's what I'm just getting at, is do we have a plan for our employees to be refreshed every year? I know you guys do it, but do our employees do it? I know.
Yeah, that is something we need to walk on. Clearly, for every position in the EOC, there is a set of required courses that must be completed. And most of our employees have completed those courses, however, we don't do a refresher. And that is something we need to look at.
Yeah, I'm not trying to make it a big expensive thing, I just, it's the guys that are out there, and as you well know, it's the guys, the nuts and bolts guys out there that need to understand how the system works. And Don?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it's actually a very cost-effective, a very simple process. The ICS-100, 200, 700, and 800 classes, which are the basis for NIMS, SIMS, and ICS in the emergency response world, those are all online classes that are available through FEMA. It's as simple as registering for the class online and having the employee take it. It takes maybe about an hour for each class, so you're looking at four, four or five hours total a year for the employees to refresh that material.
And that's what you say.
If you wanted to do it on an annual basis, or possibly every two years.
And maybe something that you and staff could look at as a possibility as we progress with this, just a refresher, because it's something you put back in the back of your mind, you go, oh, I don't do that, so.
Mr. Mayor, then also, and Scott alluded to it in May, we did the tabletop, but we also went through all of the different processes for each position as part of that emergency operations center. And that was really, I have to compliment CAL FIRE and the County Emergency Operations Center Coordinator, they brought together a really good team to help everyone, and by the way, there are other agencies there, not to brag, but we are very far ahead of everyone. And our staff actually, when questions came up, their hands went up to answer the questions where other ones weren't. And so, it was a good sharing of ideas amongst other agencies, but I do, Scott has done a good job in his team of helping us try to stay on top of things, and then Human Resources also does that as well. But Andy's right, it's something we could improve on, and as particular as we have people change hands, and we do have a lot of part-time people, so they also need part of this training as well.
And I'm looking at, not only us, you know, like we have NART and we all were required to take it, but we had our CERT team that unfortunately, and you know, and it's a poor, it's a bad subject, but we just haven't done anything with them. And I know we're hampered by the state laws and things like that, but I would just, somehow or another, we need to keep those people active and interested. So, anything we can do as a staff to look at bringing them back into the fold and doing that, it's cost-effective ways to do it. But I, excellent, Don, you did a good job. Let Scott, he didn't have to take credit for it, you did a good job. Do we have any cards on this?
No cards on this item.
Okay. With that, I'll bring it back here. No other questions? We have to adopt a resolution, approving it? Do I have a motion?
Move and approve.
I have a first and a second?
Councilmembers Newton, Bash, Hannah, Mayor Portem, Grunmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
This is 7A. This is... Chad, is this yours? Yep. Oh, 6C, I'm sorry. This is John. Jumped ahead of me.
Turn my mic off when you start talking about Chad. This is just a verbal report based upon the current status of the city of Norco and the Riverside Transportation Reliability Project, based upon the discussion at the last council meeting. As you're aware, that the RTRP is Southern California Edison Project, which essentially benefits the city Riverside ratepayers. It obviously also impacts all the cities and the county where the transmission lines are being placed, and based upon the concerns that this council has expressed, as well as the other participants in the process, we felt that it was appropriate, since we wanted to make sure that we've done everything we can, that we first make application to be a party to the process. In order to be able to appear and file documents before the Public Utilities Commission, we need to be approved as a party that requires filing an application, which we've done. There's no reason why we wouldn't be, and it puts us in the same status as the city of Corona, the city of Arupa Valley. There are, in addition to the SCE types in the city of Riverside, there are now about 46 or 47 parties. One of the reasons why it was important to do this now is that the, at least initial hearing will be held before the Public Utilities Commission Administrative Law Judge on November the 18th. In anticipation of being named a partner, we also, today I filed a pre-hearing conference brief, which basically sets forth the concerns that this, the city has with regard to the application. Of course, one of them is that the city of Riverside should bear its proportional share of the burden, since it's entirely to the city of Riverside's benefit, and I guess to some extent SCE. The, we're also obviously very concerned about the impact on the wildlife corridor of having the type of structures that they are proposing to install. And finally, as it's become more evident, it goes through a designated fire hazard area, which hasn't been addressed. And as you probably all saw in the paper, that SCE admitted that cause of a number of the wildfires in California was a result of their equipment failures, and we obviously have some significant concerns about that. One of the alternatives, of course, is undergrounding. It's expensive, but if Riverside wants it, Riverside should pay for it. SCE slash Riverside should pay for it. At any rate, the next step will be the initial hearing on November the 18th. I expect that the result of that hearing will simply be to schedule more hearings. One of the things that all the parties, specifically Norco, but all the other parties as well, as... as well, has requested that there be a public hearing, public participation in the issue on a go-forward basis, so that rather than simply the PUC blessing of SCE's application, that it be sent down to the people that are going to be affected and giving them an opportunity to provide input. I think it was Kevin that sent me, having nothing directly to do with this, but sent me, and I don't know exactly where it came from, but a picture from Chino Hills where because of the impact on that wildlife corridor, SCE was required to underground. It's a little bit different because SCE was the only applicant, it wasn't the city, in this case, we have the city of Riverside saying, hey, we're a public agency too, a little bit, little bit different situation, but nonetheless, that's a potential alternative, and we'll keep pursuing it. There's no litigation, this isn't litigation, this is simply the city filing a brief and getting involved in the process, and more than anything else, in talking with the other participants, it's showing that the communities where this is going to occur are very concerned, and it's not simply a landowner that might lose some money because he can't use, or they can't use their property, but rather actual people, the citizens that live there today that are being impacted and want to make sure that their rights are protected. And that's essentially where we are, and I'll keep you informed.
Anybody ask questions of the city attorney?
And where are we on the river road? Have we done anything in that direction? Because talking about undergrounding, or where are we at with that project?
That's a Circle City one.
Circle City.
We've expressed our concerns, and it's for the PUC, none of like this, we're not quite as directly involved, we're not quite as directly involved, obviously.
Can we be directly involved?
Potentially. I have to see where we are, I mean, I have to see where we are in the process, I mean, not where we are, but where the PUC is in the process.
Yeah, because that's, that'll really have an impact on those people if that thing is put in, the way they want to put it in, so if we could maybe get an update on that, and if there's something that has to be done, you can just move forward and do it?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, because that affects more residents, just more than this thing, because that affects actual residents. Greg, you have any questions, John?
No questions.
Robin, any questions?
No.
Okay. Any cards on this?
No cards, Mayor.
No cards, okay, bring it back. This is a receiving file, do we have a motion for receiving file?
Receiving file.
Got a first and a second?
Councilmembers Newton, Bash, Hannah, Mayor Protem Grunmeyer, Mayor Hoffman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
It's getting close to nine o'clock, it's from my fellow council members, you want to just continue and not take a break since we didn't have it, we're good then? If we just want to get it done?
Get her done.
Let's get her done, is what he just said. All right, continue on to 7A, continue the public hearing. Amendment fiscal years 2019, 2023 capital improvement budget to incorporate Second Street, this is Mr. Chad, that's yours, space.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the follow-up item that we are dealing with from the last council meeting, where the council approved the contract award to All American Asphalt to do the sidewalk improvements at Second Street in the I-15 northbound off-ramp. At the time, we would have adopted this item before you, which is a resolution to add the funding for that project, unfortunately, there was a delay in, by press enterprise, by not advertising the public notice in time as intended, so we extended it to this council meeting. So what this does is basically add the funding for that project to the current CIP budget, again, as we talked about before, Caltrans is providing $250,000 grant towards the project, and then the city is funding the rest of the project out of our capital fund 149, which is our street improvement fund. The overall bid was $353,000, we're asking to, council to approve $388,000, which is, includes the contingency in case we needed it, so we don't have to come back for that. Basically, this is adding it to the capital project, we're seeking you to approve the resolution that provides that funding, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, any questions? Greg?
No questions.
Kevin? Robin?
No.
Bruin?
No.
I don't have any, any cards on this?
No cards on this item.
No cards, bring it back here. This is public hearing, no speakers, closed public hearing, I better close it officially, boom, back here. Do we have a motion? Motion to approve, a second? We got a first and a second?
Councilmembers Newton, Bash, Hannah, Mayor Protem Grunmeyer, Mayor Hoffman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, just a, one item I forgot about, I did get an update from the contractor regarding this project, there's currently a three to four month delay in getting the traffic poles that they're going to put in, so this project will not likely start, including the off-ramp portion of the project, because they're doing two projects against one, probably until March or April, so just, but it is, it is there in the queue, but they just are in a long line waiting for those traffic poles, that's part of this project, so it won't start anytime soon, so I just wanted you to know that.
So hopefully before, we don't want to mess up the beginning of school when they do the semester changes, but it'll be done.
But this project will be done at night.
Okay.
So it won't be during the day construction, it is planned and approved for early night.
I'm glad that the teachers and the students at Norco High School appreciate that, I'm sure. Okay. All right, and the public hearing's 8A. Amendment, the general plan amendment, and this would be Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this is an amendment to the safety element of the general plan. It's, the safety element is one of seven elements that are required in the general plan, and state law requires that they periodically be updated as needed. One of the things that's driving this amendment tonight is Senate Bill 379. For the adoption, before a city can adopt its local hazard mitigation plan, they have to also update their safety element to incorporate goals and policies and provisions to plan for impacts to the community from climate change that may occur as a result of climate change. One of the, there really is only three areas where the city might have impacts from climate change, one of those being the wildfire, potential wildfire impacts that could increase as a result of higher temperatures, longer droughts. Currently, our safety element and the local hazard mitigation plan have within it, within them, the fire hazard severity zone maps, and there are policies already adopted for addressing potential impacts from fires in those areas. With this, with this adoption, we have to incorporate wording that, that says that if there is a trend in impacts resulting from climate change, that we have to address those policies and goals accordingly, so that we are prepared to meet the impacts and the results, results of impacts from those types of events, should they occur. The other category where the city could have potential impacts from climate change is due to earlier runoff that could occur because of increased heat, earlier runoff from the mountains that might impact earlier flooding conditions along the river as a result of those. Like the existing policies and goals that we have for fire hazard severity, we already have in place the programs needed for flood control improvements, we do have program in place where, in conjunction with Riverside County Flood Control, there is a, they do have approved plans for the improvement of channels in Norco that would handle local flood hazards, and then likewise, the local hazard mitigation plan and the safety element will be updated appropriately to address additional impacts that may occur in the future from climate change to those areas that already are prone to flood impacts. And then the other major category where the city might have more exposure is to groups in the community that are already at risk of potential impact due to the, due to extreme weather events that could occur, and those are primarily, as you could guess, would be the elderly, young people, people with chronic conditions, those that are economically or socially disadvantaged, and those who work primarily outdoors. Right now, the city has in place, because of the fire department, we do have, we do open cooling centers for extreme weather conditions, again, with the updates that will be coming in the future to the safety element and the local hazard mitigation plan, as if trends show that there needs to be more done to address those impacts, then we'll address those plans accordingly. So, the local hazard mitigation plan, which is the next element on the agenda, or the next item on the agenda, is ready to be adopted by the city council, but before that can occur, we have to also update the safety element to incorporate all of the issues that I just discussed into the safety element, and to adopt the local hazard mitigation plan as a, an appendix to the safety element. So what you have before you attached is a resolution that basically addresses that and adds those elements to the safety element, and with this approval, assuming it gets approved, then it opens the door for the local hazard mitigation plan to be approved, which has already been approved by the Governor's Office of Emergency Services and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and just finally, as a final step, needs adoption by the city council. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation and answer any questions.
Council, any questions of staff? Greg? Kevin? Robin?
No.
Bruin?
No.
Great job keeping the state happy, okay, thank you. Are any cards on this?
No cards on this item.
Okay, bring it back to, there it is, got a first and a second.
Councilmembers Newton, Bash, Hannah, Mayor Protem Grunmeyer, Mayor Hoffman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, moving right down the road, 8B, adoption of Norco Local Hazard Mitigation Plan Annex from the Riverside County Operational Area Multi-Jurisdictional Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Chief?
Good evening again. So to sum up what Steve just said, as council will recall, last year I brought this plan in front of you, and essentially identifies hazards to Norco and what Norco is doing to abate them. At the end of the day, the LHMP makes us eligible for mitigation funds. Doing this process now, being ahead of the game prior to January 1st of next year, potentially gets us 100% reimbursement for funds that we will expend during a local emergency. It also opens up the door for mitigation funds, and identifying the hazards in the plan, we don't necessarily have to have that event occur here, but it opens us up for funds, so Brian can attest to this, and this is where he helps us out in the city. I don't recall if it was the Thomas Fire or the Montecito Flood, but shortly after the state advertised, if you haven't adopted LHMP and shovel-ready projects, there's money available. Obviously, we didn't meet that at the time, tomorrow we will, so it helps us mitigate these exact issues that we have identified in the LHMP. With that, I'll take any questions.
Council, have any questions of the chief? Bruin?
No, just a statement, thank you, thank you chief for getting this brought up to date, I remember we looked at this last year, or the year before, I forget when it was, but I think it's a good deal to have it in place, and it's nice to know that the incident don't have to happen right here locally for us to receive some funds on it, so thanks again.
And it does have to be identified in your plan, so if, if we didn't list it, we wouldn't be eligible.
Right, and thanks for your hard work on this stuff, again.
You're very welcome.
Robin?
Thank you.
Greg?
Chief, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good report. Just, as I was going through this, that, is there any changes or upgrades to like our fuel modification policies?
Not since you saw the policy as it was last year, or the plan as it was last year. We still do defensive space, fuels reductions, all those things. If it's city-owned land, I travel around with Hank every year and decide on the mitigation factors for that area. We have it in our vacant parcel weed abatement, as well as our improved parcels. Outside of that, nothing has changed. The document, as it came to you last year, was submitted to Cal OES, the county, and FEMA, they've all conditionally approved it based on the adoption by the council. So it's as it was last, a year ago, as you read it.
Okay.
It just took that long to get it back from Washington. Appreciate it, chief.
More stamps.
More stamps.
Kevin?
Just a correction, page nine, Brief History, sorry, it says that the Lusanneo Indians used an occupied region that included the Corona Norco area, Norco, Corona area, the main village was in Tamskul Canyon, and the Norco area was used as a hunting and gathering location, that's actually derived from an incorrect ERA, EIR, rather, that was done in the Norco Hills, there was actually a large village at Bluff Street, and that, there's indications, there was also one at the corner up near First and Hillside, I can send that to you, and then the concept of Norco began as a subdivision of North Corona Land Company, it's not correct, it was Citrus Belt, North Corona Land Company didn't exist yet, and it was a subdivision of...
But round, it was actually there.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, it's, well, you just forgot it, so I figured I read it in the book. Anyway, it was a subdivision, I think of Corona, I think you need to add there, and Citrus Belt, and then years of experimentation, that's all correct, and then the property was sold to the North Corona Land Company, that's not correct, it was sold to Rex Clark, and North Corona Land Company was just the development company and the construction company, but it would be to Rex Clark, and then by the mid-1920s, it would not be the North Corona Land Company, it would be Rex Clark, they were just simply the development company, the company that did all the maintenance, and I can send you that stuff, if you're still awake.
If you would, I'll check with the county to see if we can make changes at this point.
Yeah, well, if you don't, it's not that important, but I just figured, at least now you know I read it.
I know, Robin read it too, she took a red pen to it, but...
Well, I did that too, but I'm not going to go there.
I'll, I'll check with the county, and if not, the most, the next update, we'll visit.
Yeah, it's no worries, you know, otherwise, you know what I wrote for your report at the top was incredible plan, who did it? Was it the one-armed typer? No, it was you. Anyway, that's what I wrote, incredible plan, so thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Chief, this is very well, you might want to put a little footnote down there referencing his book and on there in the future.
Yeah, I should have met with the local historian.
I know, I know. And I agree with you on this, is because when the winds hit San Jacinto several years ago, they didn't get reimbursed when it went through, because they weren't included and didn't have all these plans together, and that city paid thousands and thousands of dollars out and with no reimbursement from any state or federal agency because of it, and so this is really important to have that.
As we all know, Andy loves free money.
Yeah, and that's...
Loves it. Loves reimbursement.
So, good job on this. I'll bring it back, if anyone else has any questions, are any cards on this, Cheryl?
No cards on this item.
Having that, I closed the public hearing on it, and bring it back, we have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Councilmembers Newton, Bash, Hannah, Mayor Protem Grunmeyer, Mayor Hoffman.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, moving on to ordinance number 1042, the first reading. Chief, you're back on.
Hello again. Sorry to take up the whole meeting.
Makes sense, we're meeting, you're not here.
I'm here, I'm here. Hello again. Sorry to take up the whole meeting.
You make sense of meetings, you're not here.
I'm here, I'm here.
You keep going.
The pager's turned off. Dad's in the back, please stop. So, before you tonight is a change in our vacant parcel weed abatement program, and we're looking to do a couple of things here. Number one, streamline the process. Number two, add the non-compliance administrative citation. So, starting with a little history of the program, we start the program in March, I come to council and ask for permission to start the program. We give 30 days to the parcel owners, at which time, our fire inspector goes out, after 30 days, documents compliance or non-compliance. Couple weeks later, I come back to council, I get the authority from council to abate those parcels using our weed abatement contractor. After that meeting, we send the list to our contractor to abate the hazards. It is now June by the time that our weed abatement contractor is out abating the fire hazard. We come back in July, asking to lean those properties that did not abate on their own, and follow a similar process through the fall with tumbleweeds. What we're asking today is to make some of those steps automatic, and that we'll begin the program in March. I left a window there without a specific date, and that's to allow for the differences in our winters. I want a little bit of buffer, so if it's a dry year, it'll be March 1st, if it's a wet year, it'll be March 30th, as to try to limit our parcel owners from abating and having to abate again. At the end of the 30 days, our fire inspector goes out. If they're not in compliance, remembering that this is a fire hazard and a significant one, given today's changes in how our fires are burning, therein, that administrative citation becomes immediate, $250. At the time, I'm not coming back to council at that point, on day two, essentially, the 32nd day, if you will, I can now send the list to our weed abatement contractor, and they will immediately schedule the abatement of those lots. If they come and they actually abate the lot, those fees are still applicable for the cost of abatement, plus the administrative fee, 100% administrative fee, for the staff time and hours of inspection, the clerical work, et cetera, and they're still responsible for the $250 citation. We come to council in the end of July for a public hearing to confirm those costs and request to place them on the tax roll if they haven't been paid to the city. Little bit of statistics, looking at this last year, we sent, there's a total of 120 vacant parcels as of the 7th of November. 27 lots were sent to Warren Brothers, however, only 15 were abated, the property owners took care of them before they got there. In the last three years, 68 lots were abated by Warren Brothers. 53 of those were repeat offenders. And that's where we're asking for the change in the ordinance tonight, cleaning up the verbiage, combining a couple sections of chapter nine, and taking into account the severity that the unabated parcels truly represent to this community. The second part of this is updating the fee schedule to include that administrative citation amount. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Council, any questions, Berwin?
No.
Robin?
No question, but thank you for finally getting that administrative site on there, because we were basically, like, doing their yard work for them at cost, so thank you for finally getting that done and putting some teeth into that.
Kevin, nothing? Craig?
So, how could you accelerate this process?
Faster than what I just proposed.
Yeah.
Essentially, take out that 30-day grace period, which I would not advise to do, that would take the assumption that every vacant parcel owner at all times knows that they have to abate that parcel.
Yeah. In addition, a lot of this is based upon statutory requirements. How we have the authority. And I've felt this way for quite a while, that when you brought up, like, repeat offenders, that a lot of these property owners, just, you guys are a cheap landscape service, okay? And that's how we've been used, or being used. Would it change to the $250? If that was to be $500, would that maybe slow down some of the repeat offenders?
No. You know, I, we surveyed our surrounding cities, Ontario, Chino Valley, Chino Hills, Corona, Riverside. This is very similar to what they have in place. Some of them do have tiered fees to where the first is 250 or 200, the second's 500. I'll leave that up to council to decide on how you wish to proceed, we can certainly add a second tier. I'd like to put it in place for this upcoming season, starting in March, and see where we're at.
Sure. I mean, and we could readjust that when we do our fee schedule, could we not, Andy? Yeah, it just, to me, I'm just tired of that, because it's the same name over and over again.
I understand completely.
Hit 'em in the pocketbook. Other than that, I'm fine with everything.
Chief, I have a couple of questions. So, this ordinance that you're proposing tonight, you say there's other cities or other communities that have the same ordinance?
Very similar.
Okay, very similar. I just want to make sure it's been tested, that we're not just sticking around, because I'm reading some of the shortness of it, and John can correct me. There's no problem with due process or anything, giving these people adequate time and notification, then, correct?
So, we're maintaining that 30 days, and then, we're also bringing them in front of council in a public hearing in July, where they can have their due process to contest any of the fees.
Okay.
But I'll-
I just make sure that we're not, that they have adequate time.
As I said, this ordinance, as well as the ordinances of other cities, are based upon a statutory scheme that, and it's been blessed by the legislature.
Okay. Yeah, that's the one thing I have a concern on, is, because I'm, just like the rest of us, I'm tired of being the same people on that list all the time, because they're just using this as a cheap service, because they don't want to clean their weeds out. And with that, I'll ascertain if there's any questions from council, do we have any cards on this, Cheryl?
No cards.
No cards, close the public hearing, bring it back up here, we have a motion to approve. I have a second.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Norco, amending chapter 9.40, merging the city's refuse abatement program with the weed abatement program, and to implement a non-compliance administrative fine, code change 2018-06.
Councilmembers Newton? Bash?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Mayor Park Tim Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
One other thing on this, Andy, if I can, because this was all missing vacant properties, is, we need, maybe we want to think on this, on some of our occupied properties too, that we have a continual weed problem. I know code enforcement handles that, is, I've been getting calls, I know the tumbleweeds are just, anything we can do-
Yeah, the process for that is to a code.
To code enforcement, yeah. Good. No, no, but if we get complaints on people like that, we need, if we can tighten up this one, maybe tighten up that one too, to the point, because, I'm not going to pick on Berwin's neighbor, but he has, if he had a Christmas tree farm, he'd make money on all those tumbleweeds.
Oh, it's gone.
Oh, it's gone, okay.
They got to come up there and hold one.
All right. All right. So-
Big weed. That's a great. The wood's red. They're leaving play like this. They're like, no.
Okay, all right. So, okay, we'll come back here to city council, city manager. Go ahead, Craig.
We adopted the ordinance, do we not have to adopt a resolution?
Oh, yeah, it was adopting a resolution, not the ordinance.
No, we did the ordinance.
Okay, yeah, there is too, thank you.
You're welcome. Is that correct?
Cheryl, you keep me straight.
Use the same motion?
Yeah.
To adopt both?
We can use the same motion to adopt both?
All right.
So, we actually, and just clarification, we adopted the ordinance 1042, and for our first reading, and we adopted resolution 21863, amending the general fee schedule. So, is everyone good with that? All right. On number nine, city council, city manager, staff communications. Berwin? Robin?
Nothing.
Kevin?
Chad, so, I think I asked this before, when is Hillside Lane going to be, is it still in the queue to have that easement put in, and then have that overlay? I got a call from a resident wondering, do we know where we're at with that?
It's, it's still, again, a project they're going forward with, they're just hoping to get out to bid shortly, and they're moving forward flood control.
Okay, and then, do we have a date when they're going to start the Crestview Street?
I don't have a date yet, but they're envisioning, I'm talking with them, it probably sometime in February.
Okay, February, not January, okay. And then, Andy, and I know we talked about this, but I spoke today with the mayor of Eastvale, and he said, they are discussing the Schlesman off-ramp, and I don't know what that means, but maybe if you could just find out something about it, and-
I don't know what that means.
I don't know what it means, but they have four acres somewhere, which I don't know where to-
We had a recent discussion with the city manager, and there is no reason for me to believe there is no action pending for Schlesman until probably 30 years from now.
Okay, well-
We killed that.
Yeah, but, but they're still discussing, and I remember all that, so I don't know what's going on. And then, we got a letter today from the Navy to comment on a project, and it's a good project, but one of the problems that we have, and I think we'll defer this to Bill Wolkman, is when we comment, I think we need to include in that, that the Navy had 90 days, and I don't know if it's policy or what, but they had 90 days to make a determination on the California Historic Commission, and they're finding that it wasn't historical. And I think that in our letter, our response, I think, Bill Wolkman, maybe we need to find out what's going on with that, and that's something he would handle. And then, finally, we play Upland Friday, right?
Up, in Upland.
Yes. The game time has been changed at 7 o'clock now.
Yeah, all right, cool. Anyway, Norco v. Upland, Friday night, 7 o'clock, 7:30? 7 o'clock. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Craig, anything?
Yep. So, I think it was last week, or maybe it was this week, I sent an email to Chad and Andy. I was going into Eastvale, and at the city limits of Eastvale, they have this really nice sign that says, "No panhandling." And-
It's okay to say no.
Yeah, it's okay to say no to panhandling. And, and, Andy, you make me laugh, because you said, "Well, I wonder how it's working," and I said, "I didn't see any panhandler," so-
He's standing next to the sign.
Yeah, well, he was asleep, but my, but what Andy said, that we could possibly bring this back as a zone code amendment, or a code amendment, I'm sorry, not a zone code.
We do have a panhandling ordinance.
Yeah, there's, there's a significant difference between us constitutionally adopting panhandling ordinance, which we do have, which meets the requirements of the Constitution. We can't just simply say, we're, you know, arresting and throwing you out of town. And, well, in fact, you've probably seen some of the more recent court decisions, one in particular, which perhaps is just from criminalizing the use of public right-of-way. But, that's different than putting up that sign, which encourages people not to- Part of it was how we can bring about the signage, okay? And, but at the same time, that, would there be a benefit, and I'm thinking with the sheriff, because, you know, the incident at Rite Aid and with the Moores next door, and we have these panhandlers slash transits hanging out in the Rite Aid parking lot, is some way to bring more teeth into it? I think that's kind of the direction I'm- Yeah, we have about as much teeth as we can have. I mean, there are unfortunately quite a number of Supreme Court decisions addressing the constitutionality of panhandling ordinances for cities. And, so, what we've done is change as time has changed. Well, then, Andy, did I misunderstand you, when you said there was something we could do? Or strengthen it?
No, I think what you were asking for, Councilmember Newton, is for the city to place signs similar to what Eastvale currently has.
That was.
I don't think there's a restriction on doing that. The question, and Chad, I might be able to help here, I don't know how well it's working for the city of Eastvale, although I recently started seeing those signs, I don't know how long they have been installed and what the results are.
Even at their gateway entrances.
Maybe have about 30 days. Yeah, but there's nothing that prevents putting that kind of sign, because it doesn't, it doesn't legally define doing something wrong, it just says, you don't have to provide funds.
Well, maybe that's part of the, you know, outreach that we have, that if you're not handing them money, they usually move down the road.
Yeah, so if it's council's wish to-
Take down Eastvale.
Add that type of signage, or just-
We could do that.
We could easily do that. Just find locations where we can do that, and where we place it, and we'd be limited, is obviously, anything in relation to the Caltrans right-of-ways, we could not put that signage. But anything with our own right-of-way, we could.
Well, you saw the sign I was talking about on Hammond.
Yes, yeah.
Or we just turn them around.
Yeah.
Just put it on the other side of all.
Okay, all right. That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to reserve mine till the end. Cheryl, do you have anything?
No, I don't hear.
Matt? All right, Chad, anything else? Steve? Brian?
Just a reminder, Sunday, Veterans Day, 10 o'clock.
Thank you. Gina? Scott, glad you were with us all night, thank you.
Hello again. So, we're under a fire weather watch the next couple of days, with a significant San Ana influence, actually statewide. Just a reminder of we're under a no burn and burn ban, as well as, I ask everyone to use caution when using equipment outdoors the next few days, please be diligent.
We're due for San Anas again, I take it?
Starting tomorrow morning.
Okay.
We have significantly staffed additional resources throughout CAL FIRE regions, and one of those extra engines is at the Hammond Station, so, as of right now, you have four engines in the city.
That's good, thank you for planning. Eric?
Yeah, good evening, I just have a staffing update for the Norco Sheriff's Office. We have our community service officer two that we amended for the addition to our contract. She has completed her field training, and she will be arriving in Norco tomorrow. She'll be going through a two-week orientation with CSO two, Vicky McNauton, to get to learn the city of Norco, as well as our applicable ordinances, parking issues, and horse trail violations, amongst the other duties that she would have in terms of supplementing and supporting the logistics for our deputies. So, we look forward to her being here again, starting tomorrow. After that, two weeks, she will be on her own, patrolling Norco, and CSO two, Vicky McNauton, will be staffing her administrative assignment, which will help alleviate some of the duties that have been put upon our special enforcement team deputies.
Okay, so, probably see her in a council meeting in two weeks, introduce her to everyone? Possible?
Yes, we'll make that happen.
Okay, and then, good job in catching the suspect there that damaged and vandalized the high school.
Yeah, that, again, that was a school resource officer assigned to Norco, so kudos to him for his investigation, as well as the follow-up done by the deputies assigned to our special enforcement team.
And special thank you to our deputies and their, Norco deputies got the tip award for saving that, good job, you guys.
Yeah, it was heroes with hearts. Yeah, it was here with hearts, it was Deputy Daryl Robertson, who is our current special enforcement team, and a previous deputy, or I'm sorry, a previous assigned Norco Sheriff's Deputy, who now works for the Hoopah Valley area. But they had both been involved in rescuing a woman that had been struck by a train on horseback in the Hoopah Valley area. They provided medical aid and rescue of her to help her get the medical attention she so desperately needed. So, it was good to see them get recognized for that.
Good job. I have a couple of things for my fellow council people. As you well know, WR Cod put out some applications for appointments for some positions, so, I don't know, they go to you, Kevin, or they go to you, Andy, for those, if anybody's interested? They'd go to you. There are some positions on a couple of boards, advisory boards. With the current election, I don't know how many of those current members were reelected. I know one of them's with the San Anna River Board. There's a Sandag thing from SCAG. There's like four positions, so if any of you are interested and want to give up some more of your time, yeah, they're there. I also would like us to consider, Andy, and if your staff, we just went through election. If the city of Eastvale, and John, you're probably going to say it's a First Amendment right. If the city of Eastvale can have an ordinance that restricts when all these campaign signs and election materials are posted around town, I don't see why we can't look into doing that as a possibility. I hate to say it, but we look like a third world country out here on, I mean, there was so much signage, and it was, and the winds blowing and everything else. So, I'm just asking to research it, John, okay?
We can chat about it, but Norco does have that ordinance. Cities are precluded from doing too much that's, except what's in the public right-of-way, but there is absolutely no obligation to allow signage in the public right-of-way. And in fact, Norco prohibits it. Whether it gets removed or not's another question. And then finding somebody to be responsible, that's the, obviously, the other difficulty is simply because somebody puts a, because there's a sign that says, "Vote for this," or "Vote for this person," doesn't mean that that person is responsible for sticking it there. So, we actually have to see somebody do it in order to prosecute. But otherwise, Norco has those rules now.
Yeah, I think what is...
In Eastvale, you can't put a sign up, except on the weekend.
On private properties.
On private properties, yeah.
I don't think it's public right-of-way.
Not the public right-of, they allow it on private property, but essentially, in the main downtown area of Eastvale, you can't put signs up, except on Friday and Sunday, they got to come, Sunday evening, they come down. They're...
Political signs?
Political signs.
Right. But the, and I understand what you're saying, but Eastvale, because I live there and I deal with the pain of that process, anything on private property can be there at any time. Our issue here primarily is we have so many vacant lots with fencing that's not prohibiting people plastering on all those locations, and that's why it looks as bad as it does during this process. But we hardly go through any place that's on public right-of-way and remove those signs. So, it's, the difference is for Norco is that we have a lot of empty lots, that hopefully some of those will go away with recent developments going to be occurring on some of those, especially along Hamner. They won't be here the next cycle. But that's the primary difference, is Eastfeld has restrictions about when you can place signs up in the public right-of-way, on weekends. So, they do allow it on weekends, Friday through Sunday, but then it all has to come out. So, which is different than ours, we don't allow it at all.
We don't allow it at all.
So, we're actually more stringent than them. So, but our real issue is just there's so many of those vacant lots in key areas, that's where we're just, it's a lot. And really, the property owners could help us out by simply keeping their properties clean and removing those signs, or requiring the candidates to remove those signs. Now, if we can have an outreach that did that, and encouraged those property owners to do that, that would be helpful.
Somehow or another, it, I know, I don't mind the local signs, but it gotten, when you have all the national, and then they're up there, it looks blighted, okay, it does. And I'll be glad when they come down here, hopefully in the next 10 days, so. But just something to look at.
The problem occurred is that, like, I mean, just to personalize it, I got permission everywhere my signs went, but what would happen is as soon as you get permission, people were putting the signs, and then the property owner gets upset, they remove them, and then they call the FBI. Sorry.
All right.
But I mean, the point is, is that, the point is, is that they really, maybe we should do something where you have, make sure you get permission from the property owner, because then the property owner, they're kind of going, they don't want to remove it, but they don't really want it there, and then it's, I mean, even at the corner of Sierra and Six, there's one person, two people had permission to put signs there. And I don't know how you control that, because the property owner's in a really awkward position, where they don't want to make somebody mad, but at the same time, they don't really want the stuff there.
Used to be an old law that says, "Post no bill or advertising on their fences."
That's right. I forgot about that, you're old.
That we, that we can do.
Well, if, I'm just asking staff...
Because it's commercial speech.
I'm just asking staff to look into the possibility of tightening it up, so we don't look like a blighted area. That's all. Yeah, Andy, there's a, you're, okay, thank you, thank you. I don't want to make an all-night of it. And finally, I want to thank the residents of Norco for supporting this council and having the trust in us. I hope we won't let you down about passing Measure R. We appreciate it. It's really going to be, make a big difference to us and to you as residents over the next 20 years, I hope, that we solve this mess that we're in. And along with the election itself, there are five candidates, the turnout and voting, it went up, which is a good showing, and I think under, when we changed it, we had a good turnout, not like I'd like, not the 50 or 60%, but we had a decent turnout. Hopefully, we had 4,000 plus, somewhere around there, or just under 4,000, Cheryl, for that. So, it's better than just having 2,000, 2,500 people vote, so.
5,000?
5,000, Mike? Six? All right. All right. No, no, you can't, you can't count that way, Mike, but that's, you have to divide it by two.
Yeah, that one is, no.
Oh, okay. You're close, but, I know. So, for that, we're good. And then, like all elections, we all have things that are said, or things like that. We're going to move on. And Andy, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, no. Don't have anything to add.
Okay, all right. But...
Yeah, well, let me say something.
Go ahead.
On that line, I just want to...
You have to use your mic.
Oh, yeah. I just want to recognize the efforts that were made by staff to get information out there to the residents, so that they were informed about what Measure R is all about. And I can't say more, other than that, again, there are all the residents out there that worked very tirelessly to get this measure passed. This is a good thing for Norco, and as the mayor correctly pointed out, this is the last piece of the puzzle that the city needs in order to ensure future financial sustainability for the city of Norco. Over the years, the city has done a lot of things, as you saw in the report this evening that was presented, to build a general fund reserve of $11.6 million, that is an accomplishment. But we've always had this issue on how to fund our infrastructure. And certainly, Measure R has now come into play to address that issue, as well as ensure that our public safety services are maintained at current levels, or to some extent enhanced in the future. And again, this is what Measure R is going to allow us to do. We'll continue, from city council perspective, as well as a city staff perspective, to continue to do the things we've been doing in the past, in terms of trying to hustle for economic development, to bring businesses here in Norco that generate sales tax, that generate hotel TOT tax. We'll continue to look for opportunities to save money when we embark on programs, along with what we've already done in the past, including restructuring our pension, to make sure employees are paying their fair share of their contributions, restructuring our medical health benefits, to make sure that employees are paying a portion of that cost. There are other things we've done in the past to ensure future financial stability. We have set money aside to address the issue of our own-funded liability relating to retiree medical, to the tune now that this city has accumulated over $9 million as of September 30, to address that issue. Other things that we've done, we've provided funding in the past, as part of our annual budget process, to set money aside to replace equipment, and to boot our vehicles, as well as information technology equipment, as well as to pay liabilities related to workers' comp, pay liabilities related to accrued vacation and sick leave, so that those things don't have to impact current year budget. So, clearly, I see this as the last piece in that puzzle, to ensure that this city's financial future is sustained.
Thank you, Andy. You know, and I almost forgot, the Montez situation, you guys have got the information, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then finally, I'd like to close this meeting out in memory of Pat Walsh, a Marine, a friend of many of us, somebody that was a community, active in the community, a community leader, former president of Norco Horsemen Association, always helped whatever he could as far as the day of the cowboy, along with announcing several things at the fair. He did it at the Horse Week, the announce, he did the obstacle course, the lawnmower races. Pat will be really missed in this community. And so, in his honor, I'll close this meeting out with a 30 seconds of silence, please, in memory of him. Pat, riding good, boy. All right, thank you.